The superintendent take the roll call, please.
Sure. Our SAU 50 rep, Maria Emery.
Hello.
Oh, hi.
Liz Barrett.
Here.
Pip Clues.
Here.
Lisa Rappaport.
Here.
Anne Walker.
Here.
Margo Peabody.
Here.
Lisa Flaber.
Here.
Old Zaneps.
Here.
Brian French. Carrie Nolte.
Here.
Kimberly Muinchi.
Here.
Nick Dallin.
Here.
Okay. Can we all stand and do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the acceptance of the April 12th. I guess we can do them both at the same time? Move to approve the April 12th.
Second.
Okay.
If I can, I think I was put in for, I believe, the alcohol minutes. I'm in as the teacher representative.
Good job.
Oh, okay. That was a big promotion, Nick.
Good job.
I'm honored.
Okay, we will change that to student representative. See what a good job we do at Portsmouth High School? Okay. Thank you, Nick. Any other comments about the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
One objection.
Oh, okay, thank you. Steve, can you take us into special presentations?
Public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment. I believe we have one public comment. Can you give us your name and address, please? And you have three minutes.
Thank you. Okay. Can I just get on my phone? Because I gotta have my own timer here. It would be great. My name is Joe Kraus, and I live at 56 Ruby Road in Portsmouth. Okay. Thank you for having me. I obviously was here last week and thinking about the policy quite a bit since then. And one of the things that we really fought about was the terminology and the presence of, and it seemed like the board was swaying toward getting rid of it. And I think that was a big mistake. So you had said that it wasn't a deterrent, that there was no proof of it being a deterrent. And I looked up, and I didn't find anything that said it was a deterrent. But if we think about the basic truths, I think about drinking and kids, I think that we can come to the conclusion that it's a deterrent for a couple of reasons. One is that if a kid is in the vicinity of alcohol, they're at a much greater chance of drinking. You know, if a kid is gonna drink, if they're sitting with their kid, with friends watching a movie, they're much less likely to drink than if they're in a house full of alcohol. So the other truth is that a lot of kids, or probably most kids who start drinking, don't want to. They're resistant to it. They do it because of their pressure. And when they're pressured, invariably, if they do manage to have the wherewithal to say why, or to say no, then they're asked why. Okay? And they might have a variety of reasons that they learn in health class, or my parents, or I don't want to get in trouble at school, or the police, right? But none of those really hold up in this. They don't sound good in a pressured situation. But this policy gives them a why in this situation. Why don't I want to drink or go to this party is because I want, it's important to be on the soccer team. It's important to be on NHS. I don't want to risk my scholarship. This is a valid reason to give to people. And so this policy, I think, is very important because it not only keeps kids from drinking, but keeps them away from this dangerous situation that puts them at a much graver risk of doing this. I think that we, the school, needs to be united with the police and with the community to really say, "We don't want, we're gonna try to help you not drink. We're gonna put this in place so you can have this ammunition to say, 'I, you know, I'm not going to.' I can guarantee that if there was a party this weekend, that some kids would be saying, you know, 'I'm not gonna go after what happened to these kids. I'm not gonna put myself at risk. I've got a lot to risk.'" I think there are maybe some problems with the policy as far as not making it educated enough in the beginning so it's right on the forefront. But I think the policy itself is solid, and I think it's a valuable asset to our school to be involved. And I think if we take it away, it will tie the hands of the administration to say, "We want to hold these kids accountable, and we don't want them to drink." So, okay.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Yeah.
I know you and I talked, and I appreciate you taking the time.
And one last thing, I'd be happy to come back. You know, I can't get enough of these meetings. And, you know, if anyone wants to email me and talk or whatever, I'd be happy to do it. I enjoyed the discussion.
Okay.
I probably won't stay for the whole one today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Do we have anyone else for public comment? I don't, maybe I'll know. Have you been on Zoom?
Do we have anyone in our virtual audience that would like to raise a hand and participate in public comment? We have three people, so.
Okay.
Seeing none, I think we can quit.
Okay. We will close the public comment session. And now we will go to a special presentation, and Steve with our middle school people.
Yeah, so I will turn it over, as you had requested, a presentation for each level around general disciplinary practices, philosophy around discipline, procedure, et cetera. I've invited Phil Davis, who is here with Rob Munson and Tim Hodgson, to present to you a little bit about the middle schools' disciplinary practices. So I'm gonna turn it over to Phil Davis.
Thank you, Phil, for coming.
Thank you for having me. And I will share this presentation with myself, Assistant Principal Tim Hodgson, and School Resource Officer, excuse me, Detective Munson. And so I want to just kind of start by, you know, acknowledging the fact that we do have, obviously, three different levels intentionally of schools, right? So we have the elementary schools. We have middle schools. We have high schools. And I think it's important in this discussion, when you're thinking about behavior and discipline, to also think about, well, there are appropriately three different levels of disciplinary procedures and behavioral expectations. And as I, for any folks that have been parents in the school, or if you've ever been to a presentation, I talk to parents or staff, and sometimes even students. We talk about brain development. And I think middle school is a good time to remind folks just of a couple of things. And I'm not gonna go on a long spiel about brain development. That's not why we're here. And I'm no neurologist. But there are really two key areas of the brain, I think, that are important to think about in this discussion. And one being the prefrontal cortex, which is kind of the front of the brain. And I look at my notes here. It talks about planning complex cognitive behavior, personality expression, decision-making, and controlling social behavior. That part of the brain, a lot of studies show during middle school ages, is shrinking. Which is really maybe not a surprise. And in its absence, an adolescent brain reverts to the amygdala, which is what we think of as the fight-or-flight response. So that's the part of the brain that stresses, senses danger, it signals your brain to pump stress hormones, prepare your body to enter either a fight for survival or flee to safety. So I think when you think about middle schoolers, when you think about behavior, when you think about discipline, you have to think about what's going on inside the brain. I think, as many of you know, and certainly the folks at the middle school know, we focus a lot on relationships. Students, to students, relationships are key. They're huge. They are the biggest and most important thing. And not relationships necessarily with teachers, but, or with their parents. But relationships with their peers. But we have changed things and stressed over the last many years, ensuring that all students have at least one adult, and hopefully more than one adult, that they have a relationship with. They have a go-to person. They have someone that they can, can get them out of a pinch when they are going to that fight-or-flight brain. We've also done a lot of work over the last couple of years on trauma-informed kind of schools, trauma-informed instruction, and ways that we can approach things a little bit differently when, when a student, or any student, is having a difficult time. We've done a lot of education, and as we are in this point in time where we're hiring different folks to, you know, work in different positions. And we've asked different teachers about, you know, what do they know about ACE scores and trauma-informed instruction? We're a little surprised that a lot of people just, it's new to them. They don't really know a whole lot of it. And so I think, we feel like we're doing, you know, if that is the right direction, and I feel that it is, we're doing a good job of really thinking about brain development, about past experiences, and treating every student as an individual. So I think it is important, again, just to remember that elementary, middle, high school should likely have different approaches to discipline, to meet the brain development and cognitive needs to that. So I'm gonna hand it off to Tim Hodgson for a minute, and he's gonna kind of walk through some data, some things that we are seeing at the middle school, what some of our most common disciplinary infractions are, and break that apart, and then I'll be back in a moment's time.
So this is my 11th year running operations in a school. And I will say that Portsmouth Middle School is probably one of, this year has been probably my most successful year in terms of data for discipline. And really, the basis of that is our teachers. Our teachers really do a tremendous job developing relationships with kids, communicating with parents, setting behavioral expectations with kids. Kind of one of the tenants of that is, and Phil hit on it right there, is we always ask our kids, before you make a bad choice, find a trusted adult. And you see examples of that all throughout our day. When you walk around the hallways, you'll see teachers pulling kids out. You go down to our lunchroom, and you have teachers on their lunch breaks going down and meeting with kids. And all that work really helps us out because it really keeps the number of office referrals down, which only allows us, allows us to kind of not be so handcuffed to the office. We can walk around the hallways, patrol the bathrooms, be out there and be very visible, which, again, helps with our discipline numbers. So looking at this year, traditionally the past four or five years, we've averaged anywhere between 110 and 130-ish office referrals a year. Currently, right now, we're about 67. So I'm projecting us to be sub 100 unless the end of the year takes a really bad turn. If you look at our most common ones that we deal with, we deal with class disruption, inappropriate behavior. Cell phone use is one that we deal with a lot because we're one of the schools, we don't allow our kids to have open use of their cell phones. So kids, on occasion, will take out their cell phones when they're not allowed to. It's kind of a middle school thing. And attendance concerns. Those are the ones that we are kind of constantly working with, and those numbers tend to be what the bulk of office referrals are about.
Sorry, so those, can you repeat class disruption?
The numbers.
Inappropriate behavior, cellphone use, and attendance concerns are kind of the top four.
Do you mind just repeating the numbers? Because I couldn't get them in my head fast enough.
So if you look at the average number of office referrals per year, we're probably about 110 to 130, and this year we're at 67 as of yesterday, when I pulled these data.
Thank you for repeating.
Yeah. So trends, we don't have any major trends. I think the biggest thing, every grade level has somewhat equal number of office referrals. Sixth grade tends to be a little lower. Those kids kind of come in, I call it the sixth-grade honeymoon. They usually don't really start popping for us until Columbus Day weekend. So we have that going for us. We have about a six-week break. So that kind of skews their numbers, but it's usually pretty even across the board. If you look at existing discipline levels and responses, we have a variety of ones that we use at PMS, and the keto-mass communication. Our teachers are always communicating at home with it, emails, phone calls, messages. You know, even if it's something that doesn't require discipline, which, again, really helps out with that, with our numbers. But we use everything from teacher lunch detentions, teacher after-school detentions, office lunch detentions, office regular detentions, in-school suspensions, suspensions. Those kind of measures are kind of the standard package that we kind of build around. If you look at what happens when a kid is sent to the office, typically, what happens is, you know, we'll get a kid that shows up. They sit outside a nice little bench outside of my office. And usually, what we ask as the teacher communicates, you know, why they're there. On occasion, the middle schoolers that we deal with have a different viewpoint of why they're there. And they'll say, "Oh, I was just doing my work." And they forget, well, exactly what the behavior was. So we ask our teachers to communicate with us. We prefer them to put it in writing because sometimes we're moving around. Oftentimes, I'll catch wind of something just because, you know, I'm moving around. So I already have the information when I get down there. Because I like knowing the answers to the questions before I ask the children. That's one of the things that I like. So once we have a conversation with a kid and kind of establish, you know, what the offense was, then it's, you know, in a conversation, sometimes Phil and I will bind some things off each other and kind of look at past precedent, look at where the kid's at, and then we'll assign a consequence. We are, we do a lot of individualized consequences because, again, our goal ultimately, and the goal of any behavioral system, is to not have a repeated behavior. So that's a lot of conversations. You know, we try to bring the families in as quickly as possible. We prefer, I know Phil and I both prefer phone calls to families rather than emails. I know that's not, we're not always able to do that just because our days do tend to get a little bit out of control. But, you know, we do prefer to pick up the phone and have a conversation with the parent and ask them for, explain the situation, and ask them for some support in backing us up. I'll tag Phil in now for a little bit.
I'm just gonna sit next to you. That's all right.
Okay.
So we're not back and forth and back and forth.
You guys might want to just move the mic a little closer. Because it has to take us.
Does that work, maybe a little bit better?
Yeah, here, you can each have one. More for people listening online.
All right, there you go. The four people.
Six.
Oh, you threw a TV, too.
Yes, three. It's gonna be a lot of hits.
Right, through the roof, through the roof.
Going viral. There are six, Phil, just so you know.
Hi, Mom.
So one of the questions, so that Margo had sent to us was, she kind of said, it's some areas you may want to hit on. But was, you know, what is the process for a student or a parent to appeal any discipline scenarios? And Tim and I were talking about, gosh, have we had that happen? And I don't know that we have. We've certainly had discussions with parents, and things are an open discussion. You know, it's, again, we try to establish the relationship that we're looking out in the best interest of your child, and this is what we're seeing. I don't think maybe but once have I ever had a really confrontational conversation with a parent. It has happened once. But it's usually in agreement of what's in the best interest for your child. And, you know, as long as we're all on that same page, I think we're gonna be doing all right. So I don't know that we've had the situation that we've actually said, "Oh, no, you're right." We do try to investigate pretty thoroughly. So before we just, you know, there's the teacher's perspective, or the adult's perspective. There's the student's perspective. But there's also about, you know, 100 other eyes that probably saw this one thing. And so we'll try to be pretty thorough in making sure we really pin down exactly what it is so that we know, and then do a fair job of communicating that to the parents before we really talk about what, you know, kind of discipline situations there are. But we don't have a set appeal process at the middle school currently. We're getting crowded over here. But the next question we were really talking about was, what is the school resource officer's role in discipline at Portsmouth Middle School? And...
So for the most part, these guys handle pretty much everything. I have had two incidents, and both of them are actually outside of the school, that I've done diversions for this year. Other than that, I haven't brought anything to court whatsoever this year. Nothing has raised to the level where I would step in. And again, the two incidents that I had diversions with, which is what we normally go to first, is a type of diversion thing, to divert things from having to go to court. Those, both of those incidents were things that happened outside of the school day. So for the most part, my job there is just to support these guys and provide security, as well as make relationships with the kids, and provide also, like Phil was talking about, somebody in the building that they can feel comfortable with coming down. And just today, I had a couple hanging out in the office that were really struggling today. So they, that was what I provide. I kind of provide a support role to these guys.
And I think that's the important thing. I have students, almost on a daily basis, get mad at me if I'm not in my office when they need to find me. Mr. Hodgson has even more that are, and he's harder to find than I am because he's more often all out and around, that are looking for him to find him. They're, he's the go-to person for those people. Detective Munson has students that are seeking him out. And it's not in an avoidance way. And I should say, our school counselors equally have students that are seeking them out. It's kind of what we've coached them to do. And say, "Hey, it's all right. You're having a bad day. I get it. Let's not mouth off or do this or that. If you need to talk, come find me. We'll talk it out." And, I don't know, it happened to me twice today. I'm sure, I know what happened to you today. It happens to Tim constantly, excuse me, every day. So, again, it's the relationships and building that place. It's not, you know, having been once in the classroom as a teacher, it's great to have those relationships, but, you know, when I was teaching social studies, I couldn't have a student come and just, and talk to me in the middle of class. There aren't as many opportunities. So you get to have those school counselors. We now have a social worker who's working wonderfully in the system and with a lot of different families. The school resource officer, you know, it's not that he's there for discipline. He's there for relationships. And every weekend, on Monday, we check in just to say, "Hey, anything happen in the community that we need to know about?" And in about half the weekends, there is something that affected a family in the community that we need to know about. So again, that communication and working, I don't know, as a team, not every student, surprise, wants to talk to me. A lot of them are really nervous to talk to me. But those ones that I made a connection with do. And same with these guys. We'd rather have them, we'd rather catch students that way. You know, and I'll say that the students that I'm the go-to person for, they have been in trouble before, you know, but this is their way out, that they can come and find that ahead of time. So another one of the questions is, you know, what isn't working well, and why? And I think it's sometimes that very same thing that doesn't seem to be working very well for a teacher who's frustrated that a student didn't show up to class. And to find out that, oh, they've been hanging out with this guy, or this guy, or this guy, or the guidance counselor, that's really frustrating because, of course, my math class is the most important thing at this time. And if I could lift the veil to the teachers of what we were talking about and the depths of the situation they're in, then they too would know. But that's some confidential discussion sometimes. And so we don't go into that. We say, "Look, they needed to be out of class." And for the most part, we have a trust in that, that the teachers are like, "Okay. You're saying it's legit? It's legit." And then we start thinking about, okay, when is the student gonna make up their work? How are they gonna keep on track academically and stuff? But I like to use the phrase, and it's not my own, but the student can't learn when their hair is on fire, right? When their world is blown up, they could sit there in class, but they're doing everything at that moment except for learning math, or science, or social studies. They've got a lot of other things going on, and they're gonna pop if they don't get out and talk to somebody. So that's actually one of the issues that we have, is that maybe we, and I know the high school sees this, and I don't want to say complains about it, but it's a struggle to transition students from, I'll say, our coddling, if you will, to the realities of the high school. And so that's something that we could do better, is bridging that gap and getting students ready for that, for that, you know, different environment. And I don't say that as a slam of the high school. I just say that it's a unique thing that perhaps we're doing, and maybe embracing kids a little too much sometimes. Yeah, I'm not sure, Tim, if you had something else to throw in at that point?
Yeah, I'll throw in, so one of the other questions was, you know, what do we do with kids who are repeat offenders? And those are the ones that I enjoy the most because those are the, because you get a real opportunity to kind of bring everybody in. You get to bring the parents in, you bring in the pairs, the teachers, and you get to kind of build a plan around these kids to allow them to access their education. One of our big beliefs over at PMS is not every single kid fits in the same box. And it's our job as educators in the community to design a new box. So we have a variety of different kids who have a bunch of different plans. And, you know, it can be something as simple from an attendance-based one. If you, I can tell you that how much a grande caramel coffee at Starbucks and a cake pop is. It's $9.44 because a kid can go, if they go five days, they get one of those. Phil's got deals for kids who don't like to ride the bus home. If they make it all their classes and execute throughout their day, he'll shoot them home. You know, we have a lot of our staff that do a lot of things, kind of incentivizing kids to make it through their day. At the same time, we do a lot of, you know, movement breaks if kids need it. And those are really kind of invaluable for some of our kids who are struggling to maintain in the classroom setting. One of the cool things now is we now have a little workout area. So, you know, bringing a kid down there and having them do a challenge me to a set of pull-ups is a good way to kind of break up the, break up the day. You know, Munson will bring him down.
Put on the gloves.
I have some boxing gloves, too, that on occasion the kids like to box around. But those are all things that, you know, those repeat offenders is really where we shine the most. And it's putting together those plans and meeting those kids, kind of where they're at. And, you know, and as you go through our data, when you look at the number of people that we have suspended this year, of our number of kids that we've suspended, we've only suspended two different kids multiple times. And I think that's a testament that that process really works and that putting that box and redesigning that box is a real strength of our building.
I think it's the understanding that everyone's gonna mess up. I mean, you think about your own middle school years. I know my middle school years, I made plenty of mistakes. And so, and also framing that for parents. That is going to happen, and that's okay. That's normal. That's regular. That's human development. But how do we react when that happens, and how do we re-educate? So you only have two repeat offenders. You only have two students who have been suspended more than once this year. That's pretty incredible.
And I was an angel in middle school, so I don't know what he was talking about. The thing I had was really bad hair, so.
All right, shall we open it up to questions and comments by board members? Does anybody have a question or a comment? Who wants to start? Oh, Carrie.
I have a lot of questions and comments, but I'm gonna stick to one for now. So I just, I really appreciate the approach. I'm, I joined the school board saying I had no issues. I had no platform, but this having come up is like really near and dear to me. So I'm a college professor. I'm a nurse. My research is on needle exchange, harm reduction, people who use drugs. And so I want students to have all those skills. I find it, and so part of, in the realm that I'm in, in my work with clients and things like that, is this feeling that, well, one, from a college professor level, this piece of like, coddled in middle school, strict, strict in high school, and I'm a coddler, like most of the families I work with are coddlers. It's like, it's like things have changed in the overall educational world. Like I want first-gen college students to graduate with honors. I want, you know what I mean? Like, I think it's just changed, right? So I'm a little leery about the, like, we don't coddle people because I think those skills, reaching out to people is really important. And then on like a clinical level, and working with drug diversion programs, and police, and things like that, I almost feel like those have progressed so much over the last 10 years. Like you talk about the incidents that go to diversion, but like our school policies have like stayed stagnant. And I'm just curious, like, Detective Munson, or any of you, like if there's lessons learned in that process where we've realized just arresting everyone, you know, punish, 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 is not the approach, how we extend that into kind of our overall school system? Because we have to have an approach and a policy for all levels, even though it's gonna be a little nuanced.
Yeah, so I will say the one, cut you off. She did ask you, but I'll cut. One thing that I, that I've struggled with as I was assistant principal and now as principal, is the sometimes public display of what happened, right? So a student did something in a very large, public way, and for them just to come down to the office, have a chat, put them back together, and say, "It's okay," well, that's not really okay because there was that public display piece of it, right? There was that disruption of learning for the other 22 students in that class, for the teacher, for whatever the situation was. And so there does need to be an understanding. And we never come out and broadcast and say, "Timmy was suspended for three days for that action." You know, sorry, Tim, no offense. We don't ever announce, you know, what it was, but at the same But at the same time, students obviously are very aware and they, believe it or not, rumor mills start. And so there is kind of that awareness. So there, there do need to be real consequences to discourage future behaviors. You know, so if, oh gosh, if, if this student got away with it, well then, maybe that's not just a bad idea. Maybe I had to, I ought to try that too. It's not, it doesn't speak exactly to what you're talking about, but, um, you know, it's.
So, I mean, my experience before Portsmouth Middle School, I worked in a couple of districts that behaviorally were a lot more challenging. This is in the heart of the opiate crisis and dealt with schools that had a significant amount of physical violence, significant amount of drug use. And I will had a number of people going through the juvenile justice system. As probably one of the, you know, Phil's been doing it and Rob's been doing it a long time. I hear you when you say that, you know, cause a lot of the kids that we put through that juvenile justice program and in some of my old schools, you know, we would even go as far as charging kids for fights inside the schools. You know, the success rate of those were, you know, when you look at repeat offenders, that was pretty common. And, you know, it's been really great working with, with Rob. Cause, you know, he gets that and does a really nice job, even if he hears like a rumor of something. He's really good about pulling a kid down and just saying like, hey, before you get into a fight outside of school and here's what could happen, let's, let's talk this thing through. And, you know, oftentimes he's grabbing one kid and I'm hearing the rumor about the other kid and, you know, we're meeting in the hallway going like, hey, did you hear this? And I just talked to the kid. So, you know, the, the juvenile justice, you know, system that we're in, and I'm the court liaison for the, the school, you know, and it, it's got its plus and minuses.
And from the court's perspective, they want to encourage the school to have first crack at things. So I'm in the loop with what's going on, but the school usually has first crack at things. So we've been lucky this, this year that in any incident that we had that was kind of on my radar, we didn't have repeat offenders. And just like, like Tim was saying, just today, we had a couple, we, there was a little bit of a stir about it with a couple of our boys. And we were able to break that up before it actually turned into a fight. So we try to be preemptive if we can. And it's usually, we usually catch wind of things as, as things are going down. The kids feel comfortable enough with bringing things to our attention. So in that, in that regard, we try to, we try to, the next step for us would be diversion, where I enter into a contract with the parents and the student and we would set a, a series of goals. And I've been very fortunate, like I said, the two that I've got active right now, no issues. And usually, for the most part, every diversion that I've had has gone very well. But they enter into that contract knowing full and well that if they violate what the guidelines that we've set, it's going to end up going to court. That's the next step. But especially at this stage, we're geared more towards a support role and a role to build relationships with kids. So I kind of, I know what's going on, but I'm kind of hands-on unless, you know, something's going on and I can kind of interact a little bit with it.
And our age group is really, they talk all the time, which makes our job a lot easier. When you're so bad at social media, which again, makes our job really easy because it's, oftentimes it's like, play. So.
And even in my office, the police officer's office, they, I am amazed at some of the things that they open up and talk about. So, which is really good.
Margot.
Thank you, very helpful. Can you talk a little bit more about the, I guess, the touch points on how you're communicating out behavior expectations? Like, as you said, it is age appropriate and it's a little different of expectations in elementary versus middle. So how do you, how do you set the tone? How often do you revisit it? How do you check in to see that it's being understood? Cause it, it does, communication is so critical. I'd just be curious to hear that, those strategies.
Yeah, sure. So our, our handbook, I review it every summer. And, you know, it's printed in the student agenda book. At the beginning of the year, we meet by team, which is 80 to 90 students. And the three of us will actually be there and go through kind of a slideshow of the, the major expectations, open it up for questions, make sure they have it. Kind of the large picture understanding of, of what the expectations are. Oftentimes the teachers will then the next day follow up in the success block, which is again, that small group of about 12 students. It's the same as homeroom, but at the end of the day, to just kind of go over and, and clarify any points, ask for any questions. And that, that's kind of it to start. And then we address things as they, as they may blow up. So it's not uncommon at some point during the year, COVID being the exception, to call together and say, okay, we're going to talk to the entire Quest 8 team and pull them out to the breakout space and just say, hey, look, you guys have been playing this game and whatever it is, and it's not cool here, the reason why. I mean, it's happened before, we said, okay, we're, we're pulling all seventh grade boys and we're going to talk to you guys all at once. And again, it's, it's addressing it head-on and just saying, this isn't, this isn't what happens here and here's why. And here's what's going to happen if it does happen here, which is, you know, when you think about the, the, what was it called? The TikTok damage to schools. They had a more crafty name than that. But we did have in one day, we had a phone taken off the wall in a classroom and a mouse taken. So I got on the, the PA system, stated the name of it, whatever that was, and just said, it's not going to happen here. And if it does happen here, you are going to be responsible for the full cost of replacement and the police are going to be involved. It didn't happen again. Now, you know, would it have come down that hard and fast on a kid? Probably not. But did they need to understand that this isn't going to happen at Portsmouth Middle School? Yeah, because schools were being destroyed and this was just the tip of it. It was right away, it was immediate, it was timely and just, we're not going to do it. And I don't think we had a, a single other incident after that, that day. So again, it's just that, I guess, quick decision points and jumping on some things.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Liz?
I have a little, small handful of questions, so I'll try to be, um, to the point. I was hoping Officer Munson could sort of expand on diversion. What kinds of things sort of end up in diversion? I mean, obviously you've only had two. And what, what does diversion entail? I know you had talked about a contract and that they set goals, but does that, are those things like community service? Are they like, so I guess I just was hoping that you could sort of expand on what diversion is and how that entails specifically.
Sure. So basically we are diverting some type of criminal act from going to juvenile court. So I will meet with the parents and they have input on it as well as I have input. Usually there is some community service aspect to it, which I have a lot, I do a lot with Special Olympics and some other things. So I try to encourage them to help out with that. So that's an aspect of it. And usually I try to do about, you know, with the ones that I have right now, I try to get us through the school year, if not the summer of being of good behavior at, at school and at home. The parents may say, well, I would like them to have good grades, so we may put that in there. But they, they have input and say-so on what goes into that contract.
Can you expand though? Is there any sort of like discipline, so to speak? Like you have to sit out or you have to, you can't do this? Or like, we want you to join us for, or we want you to do this? Or, I mean, if I'm trying to get into that.
Sure. If, if the parents would want that, I don't normally put that into my contract. But if the parents are like, well, I want them to attend such and such on the weekends, we can put that in there. So we work with the parents in conjunction to set the guidelines for those contracts. And they, again, they have say-so that, I, I, I flat out tell the young individual that they really don't have much say-so in it. But so, but again, we work with the family to, you know, they, and they have put stuff like that in the past and some of the ones that I used to do in the high school, the parents would say, hey, I want them to attend counseling or whatever it is, and they would have to attend those counseling sessions. In, in regards to more of the middle school level, it's pretty much, let's just make sure this doesn't happen again. You know, one was, one, one of the two that I have was a fight. You know, I, I put in there, no contact between the, that individual and the other individual that the fight was with. And, you know, again, haven't had any problems with that. You know, and what's good is we build these relationships with these kids that I can constantly check in with that young individual and make sure, you know, they're doing good and encourage when they do do good things. Like I think we had an incident regarding one of the contracts where the individual did very well and avoided a potential interaction. And Phil and I, when we saw him, when we saw that individual come in that morning, we praised them for what they had done. So we try to, you know, encourage that stuff.
And why is there so few? Is there so few because things have to rise to a certain level in order to, I mean, so there has to be some sort of element that would actually go to court, but then you're not going to court? So I guess I'm wondering why there's so few? Is it because things don't rise to that level or things maybe rise beyond that level and you're not there?
Yeah, so, so it would have to rise to a serious enough security issue or be like a repeat offender type thing. If we caught somebody vaping a couple of times, that may rise to the level where I need to step in. But most of the time, we're able to, the school's able to handle that on the first level. I'm involved in, you know, especially if I know the individual that, that's involved, I can have a conversation with them. And, but for the most part, the school gets first crack. It's either got to be a serious safety issue or it's got to be like a repeat offender type thing.
Okay. And then can you talk more about, so just a couple more questions I had, I don't want to take up too much time. I, I wanted, I wanted to know more about the confidentiality piece because there's this interesting interplay and it sort of was brought to our attention last time that there is this R O sign between the police department and the schools. And it gives you guys a good talk, you know, a good point to be able to sort of check in in case like maybe a parent was arrested over the weekend. And so to know if there's sort of this trauma going on at home. But, but then, but then you said that the kids sort of come talk to you and then you can't tell the teachers what's going on. So I guess I'm just wondering if you could sort of talk to that confidentiality piece because I think that that's something that maybe the school board will need to wrestle with at some point. Within, maybe it's more relevant at the high school where things are sort of broadcasted, where you're saying like, hey, you're, you know, you're saying, hey, you're suspended, but we want to make, set an example of the situation. So I guess I just, I'm wondering what your thoughts are on this confidentiality situation?
Sure. So the confidentiality that I'm speaking of is, you know, the progression through the school as you go from maybe paraprofessional to teacher to assistant principal and principal or even guidance counselor somewhere in there, school counselor in there, the veil is lifted, right? I, I will sometimes tell students, even though I haven't spoken to them directly about their home life and their situation and what happened to them in third grade. When we get down to it, I say, look, I, I understand and I know the story. We don't have to talk about that, but I, I do know that because I'm, I'm privy to that information. That's the information that, you know, their math teacher doesn't need to know. And so that's the confidentiality that I'm talking about. I, I don't need to go and say, oh, well, this, you know, god awful story happened early in this child's life. I can say, this is a trauma student and they've had some things happen. And so, you know, and then maybe even say, these are some events or things, topics that might trigger this student. But that's the confidentiality, confidentiality that I'm speaking of. It's kind of the home life, past experience type things. And yes, there is a confidentiality when you're talking about specific disciplinary measures. I, I don't have the right to discuss any student's specific disciplinary measures with anyone but that child and their parent. You know, if there's ever say a fight, the student was like, well, what happened to him? You know, is he also going to be suspended? Well, that's not what's important right now. What you need to know what, what your piece of it is, and that's where it ends, is between you, me and your parents at that, at that time. Not everybody else because, well, of course, everybody wants to know everybody else's business, they're middle schoolers. But that's kind of what I'm saying, I'm not sure if that fully addresses.
Yeah, I guess I just, from a policy standpoint, obviously there's FERPA, but I feel like there's other things that would fall like outside of FERPA that, you know, wouldn't be disciplined. Like the student may be coming to chit chat with you about something at home or whatever. And, and so I guess I was, when I was reading through some of these policies, I was kind of just trying to wrap my head around, you know, what, what do we have in policy? And then what is actually able to just sort of do? And whether you're sort of just taking that stance? Like I understand that like a social worker has a certain level of confidentiality that maybe another school employee wouldn't have to a student in sharing information just because of that, their role as a social worker. But I don't know that that's necessarily in a policy other than our FERPA policy regarding like discipline and, and school records and stuff. So I think that's something that I've been trying to wrap my head around a little bit. And I think it's obviously, I think it's a national, you know, I don't know if it came into some of these, some of the stuff that's in the house right now about student records and whatnot and sharing of information. And so just sort of, you know, as far as discipline and, and communication with students, I was trying to understand that. And I'll pass it on, the only other question I had and was hoping that you'd expand on was social media and bullying and whatnot because I think that's something that happens outside of school that probably comes more to school. And I imagine middle schoolers are probably heavily using social media in ways that, you know, they're saying a lot and doing a lot. And I've seen some middle school social media Instagrams of things that may not have been appropriate before. So I guess I'm just wondering, like, how does that end up coming into the school day? And I think, cause we have a social media policy, I believe, or a bullying policy. And so I guess I'm wondering, you know, I don't, obviously, once we look at that, we might want to go into that a little bit more and social media and whatnot. I'm just wondering if you can expand on your experience with social media and bullying.
Tim's our house expert.
So, so again, when you're looking at bullying, you're looking at the displacement of power. So that's one of the things that, you know, we, we use the term bullying often. And if I tell, uh, Rob, he stinks. And then he says, you stink more, I can't then claim, you're bullying me. I mean, that, so what you're looking for is you're looking for that displacement of power in every case. So bullying and that, those social media violations are two different things. We're constantly getting, unfortunately, because all our parents gave their kids cell phones, we're constantly getting hammered with, uh, social media stuff because our kids, unfortunately, they make mistakes on social media. And, and we're pretty proactive in contacting parents, even outside of school hours. The three of us are always monitoring and kind of going back and forth at all hours of the, the day. I mean, it was Christmas Eve this year and I was on the phone with a parent about something that was on there. Unfortunately, the job, I think, our job has kind of turned into a 365 day a year job with that because we tend to be, a lot of that, that negative stuff kind of goes through the school. You know, we're pretty open about if we see something and something gets reported to us, which happens all the time because kids talk. You know, we're pretty, pretty great about contacting parents and just saying, hey, here's the screenshot and this is what your kid's doing. Take your, take your kid off social media, take their device and, you know, we'll touch base with them the next time we're in person. You know, those conversations happen a lot. You know, our parents, I'll say in the community are really great when it's not a pleasant phone call to hear my voice at 9:30 at night on a Friday. And our parents that I would say that we work with are really great about listening and saying, hey, this is what your kid's doing, here's the screenshots. I don't have all the details, but I need you to intervene until we can touch base with the kid on, on Monday when they're in person. And oftentimes it's, the, the issue stops right then and there. So, and that's really helpful for us to kind of work together in those regards.
But it, it does sometimes bleed into Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday too. And that's when we have the right to intervene because it's affecting the other student's learning day. It's affecting their school day because of what was said over the weekend. And it's a, it's a pull-your-hair-out scenario for us because it, it means that the school day never really ends. It, it means our job does not just have the boundaries of the, the wall, the brick walls of Portsmouth Middle School. It goes beyond and things that, of course, things that happen on social media bleed right into the school day. And so again, it's that upfront, trying to get on top of it. And then again, explaining, this happened, it's going to stop right now. This is the end of it. Otherwise, we are in this situation and maybe it is bullying, maybe it is harassment. And if, and if it doesn't, then that's when you go down those paths.
I think Lisa had a question and then Ian and Pip.
I feel like there's been so many questions. And one thing, big picture, I was curious to get your perspective on is there's a few things I very clearly have not heard you say in what you're. I very clearly have not heard you say in what you're talking about. I haven't heard you say that you remove kids from sports or that you take kids out of clubs or that they're, you know, removed from any extracurriculars. Is that something that doesn't happen in your approach to discipline or did you just not share with us that piece of it?
So, we'll use, we'll use sports as a carrot sometimes for some of our kids who are repeat offenders. Like, I'm just thinking, this week, we had a kid that was kind of struggling and played on our baseball team and Phil's like, look, hey, I need you in class and I need you engaged from here on out because you have a game tonight and I don't want that to, to impact it. And, because he didn't want to send the kid home and obviously if you send him home, he can't play, so.
To which he said, don't take away baseball and went to class.
Went to class, did his thing. So, that's, you know, we, we do work a lot with our, our kids and our student athletes to, you know, maintain good behavior. It's not a perfect system because sometimes, you know, we, there's occasionally we'll be like, ah, should we be, should this kid be playing or not playing? It's something I think with our new athletic director coming on that this would be a conversation, you know, that we'll be having with, with cause and talking a little bit about, hey, you know, how can we do this better? Because I think, you know, there are some, some ways and some, some ways that we can kind of tighten that up and still have some flexibility that, that we enjoy.
So, I want to just follow up on that because I think one thing we're wrestling with is a board, big picture, is if we want to think about discipline K-12, so we teach them the right things in kindergarten, so then they come to you ready for your expectations and then you send them to the high school ready for those expectations. Does it feel consistent to you? And if it doesn't, you know, what do we do? Because I feel like as a board, we're not trying to tell you how to run the school, but we're trying to create policies that put a good structure in place that's consistent K-12. And I don't feel like when we're talking about it right now that that's what we're hearing from people. And it could be our, probably we wrote charitable policies or it could be-
Well, you, you have a better view of it than, than we do, you know, in the middle. We know what we do with the students that we have. I wouldn't say that I have a great view or opinion of what happens at elementary schools. And I know, you know, some students that we send to Portsmouth High School, we hear stories, but not to say we forget about them when they leave, but, but we're, we're busy with the students in front of us on a day-to-day. And so, I, I don't know that I would say it's consistent or inconsistent. I would imagine there are some inconsistencies as you go K-12, for sure.
And I would say, you know, getting the, the operational administrators in all the buildings together and having a conversation about discipline, I think is something that would be valuable, you know. I think, you know, oftentimes, and this is just the unfortunate thing of education, you end up working in a silo and, you know, to be honest, I don't really know much about the other buildings. I can barely find Dondara when I drive there. So, I get lost in that neighborhood every time. It's like one time, but, you guys can fix that. But, you know, it is something that I think, you know, we've talked as an admin team of trying to find more time and then, you know, it's, one of the unfortunate things is, you know, we, finding those moments and finding that time to y'all get together is, is a real challenge for us. But, it would be really valuable and I think we've, we've talked about that in our PLCs often.
Fair enough. Ian?
I just wondered whether or not there was one grade or another that had more, more incidents. I know you mentioned the honeymoon at the beginning of sixth grade, but I didn't know what the six, seven, or eighth was.
There's not one grade that does, is, is worse than the other. I mean, we'll have little, you know, again, depending on the, every, every couple of years, we tend to have a class that tends to be a little bit more than, than others. But, for the most part, it's, it's pretty, pretty consistent. You know, it's not like I sit there and go, oh, man, here comes the, the eighth graders or here come the seventh graders. For the most part, they're all a little different, but they're, again, we have really good kids and the majority of them make the right decisions. And that's really, really helps us and makes our job easy in that regard.
And have they worked back after? I remember, Phil, when you came to the board meeting one time saying that, that the, the eighth graders were acting like sixth graders.
Yeah.
And then the sixth grade teachers are saying, well, now you know what we deal with all the time. Has that changed back to what it was pre-
Yes, you know, I would say probably mid-November to December, students were better socially integrated, if you will, into the school. There's still sometimes regressive behaviors, you know, and you still think, wow, that's not quite the way I remember other classes of eighth graders, seventh graders, sixth graders behaving, interacting socially. But, the, figuring out how to behave within a school building when there's so many other people around, that's, that has smoothed out a great deal.
We've seen a lot of growth with our, our kids this year. And again, you look at our eighth graders, our eighth grade classes, it's like their first really normal year that they've had.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the growth that they've had, you know, our seventh graders have really grown, are they where they would traditionally be? I would say, I would say probably not, but we've seen a lot of growth when they are catching up and figuring out how to act like students. And again, that's not us, that's our staff that are doing the bulk of that work. We're just, we're just there.
Right, probably glad you are.
Pip?
Thanks. I have two questions for you, but I also want to say that I very much appreciate your efforts to sort of preempt issues before they happen, I think, by building the trust and relationships. I think that seems to work really well and I'm just glad for the students that they have that. One question is, do you, do you ever get into a situation where you're disciplining kids for things that happen outside of school? Or do you only have, do you only work with them on issues that occur in school?
I think the only issues that we discipline for that happen outside of school are those social media bullying type or, or mean behaviors that happen. And then, that's an intervention that we have immediately on Monday or Tuesday, whenever, you know, they're in school next. But, no, if, if something has happened outside of school that would be, you know, illegal, we catch wind of it, we'll let this guy know. And which, he'll then reach out to parents and see if there's, you know, a way forward or if it wants to be reported. I mean, that, that actually has been a really tricky point to be, having the Conny Bean Center right there is because that is technically not the school at 3:15, but a lot of stuff happens there every day. And so, to constantly drawing those lines and of course, who controls the cameras that can see what happened there, it's the, the three of us. And so, we've had some actually great conversations with Todd Henley about how we can move forward and maybe restructure things over there with the opening of community campus and, and better supervision, but that's a different discussion. So, yeah, not, we don't typically involve with what happened outside unless they're of a dangerous nature, obviously. You know, something that's going to put somebody at danger, at risk and, and we'll intervene.
I do, but a lot of times, I'll take those things because I know the families and I know the, the kids involved anyway. So, it's easy for me to kind of make that transition to work through that. So, I, so I will, like I was saying earlier, the two diversion issues that I have right now were outside. They were from incidents that happened outside of the school.
But, they don't then have consequences at school?
No, 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 no. Yeah.
So, and then my other question was, are there any restorative elements that you use in your discipline?
Bless you.
Yeah, I, I think there's a, there's not a restorative justice program, say, but there are, there are certainly elements that exist, whether it's building up the, you know, rewarding positive behavior, whether it's, there are sometimes instances of, hey, you wronged this in this way, so now we are going to work back and do some, you're going to rake leaves in front of the school or come out and pick up trash in front of the, you know, those, those types of things. I have worked in a school in the past that had, you know, real programs around that and, and we don't.
And I would say we probably lean more towards the restorative side than the punitive side. You know, and I've, I've run both systems in my career. And again, a lot of it, a lot of what we do at Portsmouth Middle School is relationships and communication, which I think probably leans more towards that restorative side and that individualized plan with the kids to make sure that we're not seeing repeated behaviors.
Yeah. And I will just note that something I want us to keep in mind when we're talking about the policy is that it seems like the individualized approach really works well. And so, I want to be cognizant that we're not creating a policy that limits you from being able to make individualized choices and determine-
I, I think very similarly on that because you get policy black and white that hamstrings the ability to work with an individual sometime on the exact situation that happened that's very nuanced and, you know.
Okay. Hope?
Yeah.
And then we'll do Carrie and I have a few questions, too. And hopefully then we can sum this all up.
So, I have a handful of questions, but I, I just wanted to validate a few things that I heard you guys say first. Because, Phil, I heard you say, like, it is important to have room for different disciplinary approaches in different buildings. You know, as far as policy goes, there might need to be modifications. But, one of the things that I noted, because I think there, there can be systems put in place that can draw across buildings. And I think what I've heard from you guys is communications with parents and staff proactively, relationships, you've only said that word probably at least 30 times, I think, taking account with kids, proactive in educating kids and making a plan with students for a go-to person before they need that go-to person, positive discipline and also very clear boundaries, which you've repeated multiple times. And I think those things are all, all components that could work in any building. And I think, not to say that that's not happening in our district, but I do think there's some inconsistency. So, I, I would just ask that we take note as, as a board on those things and think about that as we're framing systems to go out to the community.
It's almost more of a philosophy than it is policy.
Exactly, yes. And so, in, in the spirit of that, some of the questions that I had for you is, in the relationships you have with kids, I'm wondering, do you find yourself really building those proactively across the, the entire school? Or do you find that you're really building up relationships with the kids that are coming in for disciplinary problems? Because I know that's a struggle at the high school. And I know that there's also been times that, you know, we've talked about, well, the high school's bigger, but there's also more staff. So, you know, we could probably revamp some things in, in every building. But, I'm just curious where you see those relationship building-
We've pushed, we've, we've pushed folks to the homeroom, that's what, what it's there for, to notice and connect with students. Success block at the end of the day, same student, same teacher, that's what it's there for. Not everybody fits into that mold. So, the relationships that the three of us have, or particularly maybe Tim and I have, are sometimes more behavioral situational and have built up over sometimes three years to really have that go-to person. So, it would be fantastic if, if I could have more of those relationships with students. It's, it's not really possible in my day. But, so it, sometimes are those students who need that, that need that, that go-to person outside of the system that's already been created.
Okay. And then I'm curious also, you talked about the cuddling, the coddling at PMS. I, I would agree with you there that having three kids that have struggled going from PMS to PHS, I think there's some give and take that could happen both ways there in just my observation. A little less coddling, a little more preparation for the reality of high school. But, but again, it goes back to those relationships. I don't think it's just the coddling that gets, I think it's the relationships there, you know, that get lost going up to the high school. So, I just made note of that. But, I'm curious around policy. In listening to a lot of the high school presenters in our last workshop, it really occurred to me that I think we have written some policies that have tied the hands from procedural execution. And I think as a board member, I have to be really thoughtful about, you know, it's kind of like working at headquarters and then sending down something, having no idea how it plays out for the soldiers or going to play out in the operation room. I'm just curious what you guys have seen in your standpoint around, are there times you bumped up against policy that you feel like, geez, I wish this was looked at differently or the approach was differently? How do you feel our school policies play out right now in the procedural execution for you?
I think the, the more serious offenses are when, honestly, when we take a deep look at what is the board policy on a weapons violation, on a drug or alcohol violation, on, on some of those serious matters that, that consistency is paramount, right? We, we're not going to say, oh, well, this kid was treated this way and did this, the same offense as this kid. So, it's, it's those more serious ones that you rely on board policy, on what exactly is written in that handbook and, and the letter of the law. It's, you know, it just makes a lot more sense to be consistent, fair, and this is what you get. Have we run in the face of that? Not that I can, not that I can necessarily recall. Those are kind of, those are the set operational procedures and that's the way we're going to do it when it comes to those things.
I'm sorry, can you just say what those were? You said those are weapons?
Drugs and alcohol.
Okay.
We haven't had, I mean, we haven't had possession of drugs on our campus in three years, weapons, none. I mean, I have to fill out a survey at the end of every year and it, in my old districts, it used to be a lot of, a lot of data and enforcement hits a lot of zeros. About, you know, we just, we just don't have those issues. I mean, we've never had alcohol in our building.
That you know of.
That we know of. Yeah, I mean, again, things, I'm, I'm not naive, I'm sure things, things happen.
There's drugs in your room.
But, we just don't have those, those situations.
So, just last question. I, I'm curious, you mentioned about the counselors and social workers, you know, and I know that that's on our agenda, on our budget for more at the middle school. Can you just talk a little bit about their role and when they come in and how you use them to kind of support, if it is disciplinary or otherwise, especially in plans?
The counselors aren't used a whole lot in, in disciplinary measures. Maybe as a, if there's someone that's got a close relationship and they've, they've run, you know, run aground and, or bumped up against some trouble, then we may call a school counselor in to be that person of support while we're, you know, talking our way through a situation. They are more the social emotional go-to folks for students and so, they will work with individuals, really heavily with individuals who are going through, you name it. And as teachers and students know that they can come to school counselors for any variety of reasons, that we've got an online format that students all are aware of, that they can alert that, hey, I need to talk to one of you. They could also just drop in. But, you know, this, sometimes it's difficult to ask a teacher, say, hey, can I go speak to Mr. Beeman or whomever? So, they can, they can do that online and then rate a severity of, you know, what, what is the weight of what I really need to speak to you about and that'll kind of drive the immediacy of that attention. But, we, we don't typically involve, you know, in a run-of-the-mill behavior situation. We will bring those behaviors back in the team meeting and the school counselors are in those team meetings, too. So, that, to say, you know, this person was out or this person's really struggling right now with that person, so let's just keep an eye on this and keep them away or, or help them guide through and so.
Last question.
I'll just do a quick plug for our social worker because having that position has been a tremendous help for me personally. One of the things that was really unique about my position before Lisa came on was I was constantly getting pulled out to the community to handle a wide variety of things that I've never taken a class in. And having Lisa, having a social worker there and just having somebody who I can bring into a house and knows the resources, is trained and, I mean, it's been a huge help to me just because that tends to kind of fall under on my shoulders. It's, it's really freed me up about, you know, this kid needs glasses and what we, also now I'm focused on that for two hours, she can take it and run and just be like, hey, glasses are ready, go pick them up. It's like, those instances, it's just been a huge asset to our building and to our kids.
That's super helpful to know as we advocate for that social worker position for you guys. Last question, because I want to pass it on to whoever's next, is I'm, I'm just curious around, sorry, I just lost my train of thought. What were we talking about before you mentioned, I just- I just totally lost my train of thought.
School worker position? The school worker you said?
Oh, yeah.
Counselors.
Yeah, the, just go ahead, it'll pop back up to me. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And I had seven questions and down to two, so everyone answered all of them. And I think just, just in hearing what you're saying, I just appreciate so much your approach. And I, and I think part of what the board and my view is struggling with is that, that individualization and there's a hard balance that we have to set with the policy in enabling that to happen. But then on the converse side, if I come in, I'm the new principal and I say, every time an eighth grader drinks, they're going to become an alcoholic, they're out of school for a month. Like, I know that's, you know what I mean? Like, so it's like this hard, I'm making up, that's not going to happen, you know, but like, I saw a concerned look. But, I mean, I think it's just this piece of when individualization is in disagreement from the parents, from prior, you know, punishments for other students. So anyway, I think that's part of what we're grappling with. And I think part of what we're hearing is that's a bigger, you know, a work group, that's a, that's like a year-long discussion on how we do that.
And I'd say that's hiring practices. I mean, really, and
Yeah.
I, I put a lot of weight on, on hiring at the middle school and to get the right people with the right attitudes in. And, you know, should you be looking for another leadership position in any of the schools? Or I think that hiring the right people is paramount, right? You, you want them, that's part of the vetting process. You want them to have the right attitudes so that they're going to fit the culture that is desired by the community.
And even to play off of that, we have changed our policy with the police department to where we have a process where you have individuals that go through, and Phil and I were in on the oral board, and it's somebody who wants to be there, somebody who, their heart's in the right place and they want to make a difference with kids. So even in that regard, we're on board with that as well.
And so I, I think with what Liz was talking about and just one of the concerns is, so there's one way where you get information and you and your team reach out proactively, hey, how's it going? Do you want to talk? When you know that a parent's been arrested over the weekend or whatever happened. But then in, in other circumstances, that communication with the police department is being used by the high school for discipline of its students. And so that's part of that confidentiality and, and so I just put it out there for like the context and, and if you have any suggestions on how to manage that.
I don't, I personally, years we've worked together, so we built that trust to where we could share that information back and forth and maintain that confidentiality. I know that if something happens over the weekend, I'll grab Phil or Tim and I will tell them, hey, listen, this happened. And that we may not approach that student, but at least we'll have it on, if they start to, there starts to be a crisis-type situation, we know what's going on. And so we don't, we may not proactively seek out that student, but we have that on our radar so that if something starts happening, we know why that's going on. So from, I can't speak for the high school and I, and I know what you're talking about, but for us, it's more of sharing stuff for the safety and wellbeing of the children versus trying to seek disciplinary action. Because the stuff that I, that I deal with, that's disciplinary action, does not, it does not impact stuff that we do at the school. You know, even though the two incidents, one was after school at the County Bean and one was not anywhere near the school. So they, they weren't related. But the main thing that I do is I share information for, to avoid this crisis.
Oh, sorry.
Can I remember my question?
All right, we have to sum this up, so, and I have questions, so.
Okay. I just remembered my, my question from earlier. I'm just curious, in your time in the district, where have you been engaged in the policymaking before it gets, hits the handbook? I know we have first and second readings, you know, like have you, have you ever been, I won't say summoned, but invited to a policy committee meeting to review something? I'm just curious, like, and would that be helpful if you haven't been a part? Or would it be helpful to know what policies are under review, when they're actually under review?
So I have been a piece and part of one of the policies several years ago that came into place. And I think Steve does on occasion highlight the policies that are under review and seek out kind of the stakeholders that might have the most, you know, or the most impact, I'd say, not, you know, and oftentimes it's not going to be the middle school. So.
Okay, that's helpful to understand. Thanks, I appreciate it, Phil.
Can you make a quick, one question?
Yeah, I just didn't know, if you could expand on, like, to whichever one, have you, has chins done anything or voluntary services? Like, have you been able to work with voluntary services? I guess, we probably all will laugh at this to some extent, but I don't know if the board knows what chins is or what voluntary services are and that those are generally implemented in maybe more in Rob Munson's world or the JPPO world, or if the division gets involved before things sort of escalate, hopefully. So I guess I just wonder if, if you could sort of just give the board a brief description of what that is and if it's actually being used. And then my other question was, where do you pull best practice from as far as how you guide and use brain development? I mean, obviously you've had years of training, but I don't know if you could spit out to the board, like, some sort of place that you've done trainings with or some sort of, I don't know if there's a, a place that offers, you know, who's, like, who, is there somebody you look at for how you guys pulled things together or anything? Thanks.
So I'll, I'll let Tim speak on the, on the chins piece a lot because I, it's not necessarily my world as much as it is his.
Yeah, so, I mean, how long do we want to talk? Because I could talk about juvenile justice system for a long time. Yeah, so the, the chin system, you know, we sometimes will, you know, make referrals, encourage parents to make referrals on their own, their own child's behalf. We work with the JPPOs. That system changes all the time. It's going over a pretty fundamental change right now. I am usually typically at court because usually the school gets linked to any, any chins petition. So is that, so I'm a court liaison, so I get linked to a lot of those cases. So usually once or twice a week, I'm over at the court to report on kids' progress in school. You know, it's a system that needs help. I think even you talk to the people that, who work in there, it's a, it's a system that, you know, they feel overwhelmed, they, you know, there's a lack of resources for, for kids. But it does seem like they're having some pretty clear conversations, there's some new positions that I know that a couple of our JPPOs are interviewing for as they kind of restructure it. But yeah, it's a, we talk, I work often with parents as they go through the process because what they hear when they hear referrals and they hear chins and they hear DCYF is, the DCYF is always negative. And I try to say, look, hey, here, this is one avenue towards resources that can help your family. It's, it's not, just because a referral or a call was made doesn't mean that people are going to be coming into your home and grabbing your children. Here's some options for you. This is a great way for us to get help inside your home.
Can you explain though that like this spectrum of like, so like you just said you were in court twice a week for chins. So like how many sort of, like, we have kids come into the office, then we sort of have chins and then we have JPPO, the two cases, and then we have court not provided? Is that sort of like a spectrum?
They're totally separate. Juvenile justice is totally separate from the chins.
He's not involved in that at all.
Yeah.
Okay, but I guess I'm saying as far as like a spectrum of discipline and behavior, right? Like, would you sort of like, things start escalating, so then you sort of provide? I just, I kind of get it a little bit, but I think the board might not understand this sort of chins piece.
Liz, can you clarify, how is this relevant?
How is this relevant to the policy?
Yeah, how is this relevant to the conversation?
Because I just want to respect their time.
Yeah, so I guess, so we have
So how are you linking this to what we're trying to solve for?
So what I'm linking is like, chins can be put in place or voluntary services can be put in place when kids have behaviors or disciplinary behaviors to sort of wrap them around and help the family and whatnot. So what I was trying to understand is sort of, we, you know, we have Officer Munson here that says, you know, we only have two cases that have sort of rise to this divergent piece or juvenile divergence. But what I wanted to understand was like, are there, are we sort of wrapping kids around with voluntary services or these other things that are sort of happening disciplinary-wise?
Two separate things, so they're
Not a school board policy.
Yeah, so.
I understand that, but I, I guess what I'm
It sounds like they have control of those programs in a middle school, so I don't know if we need to have more of an explanation. It sounds like these three gentlemen know how to work with that system, chins and the juvenile justice.
I'm not trying to get into the system, that's not what I was asking. What I was trying to get at is like, is that being used as part of this disciplinary behavior piece or anything like that?
Yes, it is.
So chins is typically DCYF involvement and/or truancy issues. And that drives that and it's a separate from a behavior or discipline issue. And so that's a, that's a DCYF matter, court joins the school and Tim will happily walk 500 steps to the courthouse.
So that's just, so that's like, from disciplinary standpoint, that's just attendance and, and what else?
Issues at home.
Issues at home, okay.
That's not, all we are, the part that we're, they join the schools through that because in a typical, most JPPOs will put in parts about attendance and good behavior and maintaining, you know, academic. So that's the reason, that's just my role as the court liaison is I'm unfortunately linked over there and get to go hang out with.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, I just have a
Fortunately, yeah, I mean fortunately, I get to go over there once, twice a week because it operates right on time.
Those are court days.
I think you all know the way the school board works is we have a policy committee that establishes the policies and then the school board votes on the policies. Is there any policy disciplinary connected that you wish you had at the middle school that our policy committee could work on? I guess you don't have to answer that question now, you could let Steve know.
Yeah, we haven't
But is there any policy that you wish you had at the middle school regarding discipline that you don't have?
Oh, wish you didn't have?
Oh, wish you didn't have.
Yeah, that's a deeper, that's a deeper thought than I have.
That's a good point.
Oh, wish you didn't have.
Something to contemplate, probably.
Yeah, yeah, something to think about would be helpful. And the other, I just wanted, my question was about drugs, alcohol, vaping and weapons and you addressed that, but I just have to tell you this one story. One day I was at the middle school years ago with John Stokel. What year was the middle school built? 1933?
1930.
1930. He took out a picture and it was dated 1930. And it was a kid holding a rifle, you know, this high. He was going into the middle school, he put it in his locker, kept it there all day because his grandfather would pick him up to go hunting after school. Can you believe that?
That was pretty common. If you look at New Hampshire pre-Columbine, that was pretty common. I worked in rural schools and we, we had similar
Yeah.
We had similar systems.
Guns and, you know, he would just bring his loaded gun to school every Friday because his grandfather would pick him up to go hunting. And my last question is equity. You know, that's one of our, our important goals for the school board. Do you feel that students are treated equitably with discipline at the middle school? I mean, is, is every student treated the same?
I think so. I do think so. And I think given a lot of opportunities and chances and it's been a, it's been a kind of a key word and something we've been pushing for a number of years. And, and again, you remind people why they got into education in the first place and it's, it's not a hard push to get teachers on board with that.
And that's a goal for both him and I. We try to make sure that kids who either go to him or I for discipline, that it's, it's similar. I mean, it's not just like we dress the same, which I look up there. But oftentimes
I wrote a memo this morning. We're, we're sure.
We do laugh because our sixth graders
Wow, that is really close.
Yeah, it's new, yeah. Right now, my mom's trying to figure out who's who. But, you know, oftentimes our sixth graders will come in and they'll confuse us. And that's kind of great because they're getting the same experience from both of us. So, you know, I can't remember how many times I've been called the, the principal, Principal Davis.
And like any good, you know, community, they try to play one against the other and then find out, wait, you've got the same answers.
Oh, good, okay.
Please, some of your mom's really on.
I hope so, but.
We need to see this and I'll say hi. You're going to say hi.
I don't know, she said, I told her it's only going to be 10 minutes. I'm not sure she went for the whole hour. But I was told, I was told 10 minutes, so.
If I could do a shout out to Rob, I believe you're retiring after this year, is that correct? Rob's been around for a long time in our high school and our middle school and your service to our school community has just been exemplary. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're going to miss you.
I'll still be around.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to
You staying around here?
Yeah, I'm going to be working with a young man with autism, so.
Oh.
And these guys are great. He's able to come in twice a week and work with our custodians. God bless our custodians because they're awesome. And they take him on and he works with them for a couple of hours, Tuesdays, Thursdays. And I'm very fortunate that I'll be working with him.
Oh, good. Oh, fantastic. And you do wonderful work with Special Olympics
I love them.
And Friends in Action, which are organizations I'm familiar with, obviously. So thank you. Thank you for your many years of service. And thank you to Phil and Tim too. You guys are too young to be in his shoes, right?
Makes you just call you old.
I did. Almost.
We're the same age, actually.
He's just much better looking.
Well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your time and your patience.
Okay, we will move on to superintendent's report.
All right. Well, first off, I have to say I'm jealous about diffusing between the two of them because the only comment I've ever gotten was from a student who said, are you Mr. Shea's dad?
Oh, that's funny.
How old was this student? Elementary. It stings to this day, Dick. So, so yeah, in your, in your report, you have the email correspondence summary for the email that you've received. Again, not a ton there, but you can see the email still trailing some of the themes that you've heard from about the discipline policies in the committee. Also some feedback on the mass tutor position at the middle school and the high school principal search, something to talk about in a little bit. And then you have the May edition of the board and administrator, as well as the policy committee minutes for April 13th. I would share with you in under correspondence, we have a letter of retirement from one of our science teachers, Jeff Gardner, and personally very sad to see, but yes, the letter of resignation from my younger Mr. Shea. So you have that in your packet as well.
George, we're sorry to see you go. We wish you the best of luck. You've been a wonderful, wonderful assistant superintendent for us and a high, and an elementary school principal and what else were you?
Computer teacher.
Computer teacher.
Teacher at Harbor, yes.
Okay. So we, we wish you the very best.
Thank you.
We think you're going to be the next Steve Jobs or something. Yeah, I mean, he's going to get into that computer stuff and keep working.
And from SAE 15, George, thank you for working so closely with Kelly Killen, our assistant superintendent and aligning, you know, sort of how we look at the high school data and our districts. So, thank you.
That's been great.
Thank you. That was very nice. Okay, what else do you have?
So, well, on to old business, I suppose. You have the consideration approval for the board meeting dates. These dates are, as they have been for multiple years, of course you are, you, you do meet the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, and so this is the schedule as would follow that. The question probably for a later time, historically you have had meetings at the school buildings, which I, I do think has a certain benefit, especially when you're there seeing certain things. But we also have had this dual platform Zoom interface that has been important in the last year plus since we've come back to in-person meetings. So if the intent is to keep that hybrid format with Zoom, as we've seen already, it can present a challenge moving around locations. So a conversation you'll probably want to have this summer and setting up the locations for the meetings next year would be to how much you want to continue this dual platform. But you're not voting on the, you don't have to worry about the locations, that's a conversation you can continue to have. You have just traditionally voted the dates for the meetings so they can be publicized and put out and communicated to the community.
So you want us to vote on this?
So, yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the proposed meeting dates for 2022, '23?
I just have a quick, oh, sorry.
Okay, do we have a, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, yes.
Question, so remind me please, this is June 13th, which is, I feel like a little late in June. What's our last day of school? Just, just, there's like end of year business or?
Are you on for next June?
Yes. Because I think this year we're June 9th and which is almost a week and a half or two weeks before the end of school, almost.
So, yeah, so you have, you're talking about the difference between graduation and
I'm talking about our, our June 13th meeting.
Yeah, that would probably be a week.
That seems late to me for June, for.
I'm not sure. That would be a Tuesday. You probably would run into that following week with students. I think, I think the student day is a little bit later next year, so. You're still well within the school year? It's not after students?
I knew it wasn't after students. I just didn't want it to be the last week of school.
Yeah, right.
Sometimes there are issues that we need to adjust, and once people are out for the summer, it's very difficult to have, if we need staff or someone to be at that meeting or something. So, that's what I was thinking about.
Yeah, no, that's likely to be the Tuesday after the Friday graduation, which I think traditionally is what.
Okay.
And we do the second Tuesday, and that's the second Tuesday.
That just happens to be the latest second Tuesday you can see.
You could possibly have, yeah. Yeah, but it is the second Tuesday.
It's later than usual.
Okay, okay. Okay, any other discussion? Yes, Liz?
The only, I mean, obviously, I mentioned Valentine's Day, but I don't care, because I'm very single, but the, the November 8th meeting, that, I think that's a no-school day because it's an election day, right? So I guess, my only concern with that, you know, not that I care to, you know, be here on election night, I'll be fine being here on election night, but I guess I'm wondering about having some of our admin come in when they've had the day off. They can just go ahead and have the day off, I guess, unless they plan on, maybe you work that day.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they would enjoy the day off, Liz, but that actually is a workday.
It's a teacher workday, okay. So, yeah, as long as it's not gonna be a conflict, I guess.
Good point.
I actually would, thought we talked about moving that off of election day when we last had the calendar on the agenda. I don't think we want to encourage people to miss voting to come to the school board meeting.
We didn't talk about these. Polls end at seven.
Yeah. And one meeting starts at seven. Six thirty, I mean, how, I don't know.
That only affects people who are working in the polls.
Right.
I mean, are they gonna be taken off the city, I mean, nobody's gonna be taken off the city, it's not a city election, right?
It obviously has happened before.
No problem.
We can shift our time, start time as well.
We usually start at seven.
Yeah, we start at seven, and so, and the polls close at seven, right?
If we needed to.
Well, they.
God forbid we have a shorter meeting now.
I don't know. How do people feel about that? Do we want to change November 8th?
When, when would you want to change it to? I mean, November 22nd is our Thanksgiving week.
Skip November 8th, follow our fall break.
Well, I was supposed to meet twice a month.
Isn't there a holiday that week? Is that?
Vacation weeks.
Vacation months.
I think we just look at shifting the time.
Can we pass it for now, and then just look at amending it later if we need to?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you, you're right to know, as long as you're within the posting law, you can change anything.
All right, so we'll pass this as it is, and then if that comes up again, we'll discuss it. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, we'll keep that November 8th in mind. Okay. Next, consideration and approval of employment, new business?
Yeah, thank you. We are pleased to be nominating to you tonight the next Portsmouth High School principal. We're very pleased to be nominating Stephen Canosi to you. Stephen comes to us most recently from Andover Public Schools in Andover, Massachusetts, as the Director of Strategic Innovation. He served in a similar central capacity as Chief Innovation Officer for the Newton Public Schools, and has a long history of teaching in various capacities at the high school level. Comes to us with a master's in English from University of Wyoming, and a bachelor's in English from Plymouth State University. And as I think you all know, but for the benefit of the community, this is the culmination of a pretty intensive and lengthy search process that began with canvassing the community of leadership qualities and a profile to guide the search committee's initial efforts. That search committee was made up of various stakeholders and went through the process of reviewing all of the applications for the position, to eventually whittle down to two finalists, and those two finalists going through a process of site visits, both in their place of work, as well as having them come to our high school, and go through, again, a process involving multiple stakeholders, Zoom opportunities for parents and community, meeting with students, meeting with staff, and then the search committee gaining all of that feedback back. And so, the search committee had met again at the end of last week to review all of the feedback, offer their last pieces of input, and from there, George, myself, and Zach have been going through a process of sifting through all of that feedback, certainly going through and digging even further into references, and in the case of Steve, talking to more people in his place of work. And we just came away with a lot of resounding positives for Steve's candidacy. The site visit down there was very, very impressive, and we do look forward to his leadership at Portsmouth High School. Again, I think with, I think he, he had a good frame of thinking around innovation, of how to incrementally improve, and also to acknowledge the many great things that already exist at Portsmouth High School, and the strength and potential of the staff there. So, a lot of that, I know, is gonna feed into some revisioning processes with the high school, and, and we're excited to bring forward his nomination to you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept Steve's nomination?
So moved.
Second?
Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And thank you for SAU 50's participation in that process. Thank
you. Okay. Welcome, Steve, to our high school.
Very good. Yes, you.
Another Steve.
So, we have two leave of absences requests for you. The first request for you is actually
from Ann Dickey, and for the balance of this year, Ann is out right now on the, and then the second request, and you're free to take them together, I suppose, is a request from Caitlin Moore Kusak for next year, a leave of absence.
I have one question on Ms. Smolars. This sounds very typical of a sabbatical, and I know that we previously had seen a sabbatical. I was just curious, if this didn't qualify, or I, I'm very supportive, I just.
Yeah, no, you're right on point.
Yeah, I thought so, too.
Carrie, which is, this is, this is a, when, when we looked at this proposal, we realized that her experience with this leave of absence will come back with great benefit for us and what she would be bringing back, because it is very sabbatical-ish. In fact, it would probably fit pretty well into that frame. I don't think it was an application for this year, and she's not, she had no expectation of asking for that, but, but I do think it's gratuitous to have a leave of absence that's gonna come back, particularly with the area of outdoor ed experience.
Do we have a mo, oh.
I have a question. So, I'm curious, was any conversation had with her, currently she's social studies, if I?
Science.
Science, yes, science from middle school, around if her interests will stay science when she returns, or is she interested in transitioning to outdoor ed as we have that kind of on our future agenda? So I'm just wondering how that might play out.
Yeah, so, great question. As you know, we have, right now, teed up in using ESAR funds, an outdoor ed position focused primarily at the elementary level. I think a conversation for subsequent budgets for this board would be, is this a structure we want to expand? And if your contemplation was an outdoor ed person for the middle school, obviously, she'd be a wonderful candidate if that were something that were available. But, but it is, I guess the basic point is, this is an area of initiative to the district, so it's gonna contribute.
Okay, great, thank you.
Do we have a motion to accept these two?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Thank you. Do we have any committee updates?
No committee updates. We had an SAU 50, what do we call that?
Secondary advisory meeting slash area meeting.
Yes. So, we met with Sal for the last time? Is that the last time we'll meet with Sal?
Yeah, that will be the last time.
He's the superintendent of SAU 50, and he will be retiring, and what's the man's name that's taking this place?
Yeah.
I can't remember. Anyway, that, it's really a nice meeting. I, you know, being on the school board for so long, I already, always knew that committee existed, but never participated in it. And it really is a wonderful exchange of ideas and thoughts about what's going on at SAU 50. And they're productive meetings, I think. Mary Lyons makes a big presentation about what's going on at Portsmouth High School. So, Steve will obviously, Steve Canosi will take over that role when, when, when he comes. So, it's an informative meeting, and it's a, we have a good chemistry, and we have a nice rapport going. So, so thank you for coming tonight. Do you have anything to report from SAU 50?
I don't. We are looking forward to continuing the relationships.
Okay. Yes, Hope.
Could you just give a quick update on Lister's position?
Yeah, thank you. So, just quickly, so we are about a week behind the high school in finding our next Lister Academy Program Director. Again, multi-stakeholder committee has done the work of initial screening applicants, interviews, had chosen three finalists for that position, three strong finalists. One of those finalists has accepted an offer somewhere else, so we have two finalists now, and we will be visiting one of their places of work. One site visit tomorrow in Sandborne, and another site visit up in South Portland on Thursday. So we do hope to have some closure to that in the next few days.
Okay, thank you.
Carrie?
From the futures board, just thinking, or advisory board, New Hampshire Gifts is coming up in June, and they are interested in matching donors to help boost funds. So if any board members know of any opportunities or donors that would like to do that, and then I'll circulate to board members to get the word out when that comes.
Thank you. Thank you, Carrie. Anyone else for committee updates? Okay, future agenda, what do we have? Future agenda items. We're gonna talk about field trips, policy changes, creation of redistricting committee, the K-12 disciplinary procedures. Our next meeting will have the elementary school stakeholders talk about discipline at the elementary school, so that will happen on May 24th. The superintendent, superintendent transition? Are you gonna talk about that? It's at the next meeting?
Oh, yeah, we can, we can update how we do it.
Nancy, I do still have new business as well.
Oh, okay. Can I just finish this while, and ESAR funds usage? Nathan, is that why you put this in our packets? Do you want us to look at all this?
Oh, you know what?
Or is this an old one?
It's an old one. Two of you, two of you were remote, and I threw that in your box, so that you have that to replace whatever we did that night before. Sorry.
Question about this future.
Yes, I wanted to add the language. Hope requested a long time ago, and we need to put in the language, language in the, starting in the elementary schools. So can we add that to our future agenda items?
Consulate.
Yes, with our Italian.
Elementary world language.
Elementary world language is another future agenda item, and we should get that on soon. Maybe we can get it on at the next meeting. Okay.
And then the field trips, I'm sorry, what is that about? Why is that on?
Brian had asked for that. He just wanted an explanation of how the field trips come to be, how kids are chosen to go on the field trips. If you don't have money to pay for the field trip, what happens? So he just wanted some background information about field trips. Okay, Lisa and Ian.
You can go ahead, Ann.
Well, I was looking for information about graduation events. I had the, Jack McGee is usually gives out the Yale Book Award, and he wondered if there was tabling back laureate. I said, I'm assuming they are, but I haven't heard anything about it.
Yeah, Mary.
We've seen a whole big list.
Yeah, it should be coming in your next packet, for sure. Mary has had that at our secondary advisory meeting, and so we can get that out to you.
And the graduation is outside, correct?
We, that is planned. We, we are looking, obviously, we have, wanna have multiple contingencies, but.
So it's not set?
Right.
Is there a Plan B if it rains?
Oh, that's just.
Yeah, you have to have a Plan B.
That is the complication of outside.
Right, right. But the date is set.
The date is, yes.
Lisa, did you have something?
I did have new business.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I forgot, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I had wanted to make a motion to address something that's moving through the New Hampshire Legislature at this time. I know that this board, as a general rule, does not get involved in politics, but this particular piece of legislation, I think, runs very counter to our district policies and all of our goals around equity and wellness and opportunity and community. The bill is House Bill 1431, which establishes a parental Bill of Rights. It has passed the state senate with some amendments and been kicked back to the House, where it's up for a vote this Thursday, and if it passes, it goes to the government, governor's desk for signature. There are many, many, many problematic aspects of this bill, in my point of view. It would restrict a lot what our teachers are allowed to teach and discuss. It would remove any right to privacy for any student who goes to the nurse or a guidance counselor to disclose anything about their health. It's particularly damaging to LGBTQ kids who would be outed to their parents if they disclose their sexual orientation or gender identity in school, and any number of other things that are pretty problematic, ending with, and we can have anybody in the community, parent or not, sue people if they don't like whatever they think is going on in our schools. So, it's pretty divisive and damaging, and I would like to propose that we, as a board, pretty quickly throw together a letter that we send to our Portsmouth representatives in the House, stating our opposition, if people in the board feel that that's something we can unanimously support. Obviously, if we can't, so be it, but.
Can you talk about how the School Board Association and the Teachers?
The School Board Association opposes it, the NEA, New Hampshire opposes it, the ACLU opposes it, you know, I was notified of it from a Sea Coast outright. List serve any number of education, medical, community groups who support students, teachers, you know, healthcare in the state oppose this bill. I mean, the list is all public. I did email you earlier in the day, just a link to the bill, a link to just what NEA, NH has to say about it. Obviously, you can all make up your own minds, but my recommendation would be that we draft a very short letter that follows pretty closely the very simple reasons that the Teachers Union has already laid out for why this is a pretty terrible idea for our schools, and perhaps just add a sentence or two to note that this is very much in opposition to our district policies, our goals and our values here in Portsmouth, because I just think this is one situation where we should really stand up for our teachers and our kids as a board.
So, we did do that as a board before this board, on the divisive classrooms.
I remember that.
And this is really a broadening of divisive classrooms.
This is even worse. It like takes that and just kind of makes it like a more nuclear option.
I think it's, I'm just saying it's consistent with our last board's decision around the bicycle.
I know, when I was on the city council, several times, we wrote letters to Concord opposing, I don't remember what it was now, but we've, we did it several times.
So I don't know if this is policy for how we've done this in the past, but given this is going to a vote on Thursday, and we don't want to sit here till midnight writing three paragraphs as a group, I would like to make a motion that I can just draft a few quick sentences and email it out to the board for people to review and weigh in and approve. And then I don't know if it would be signed by all of us, or if certain people don't want to sign it and want to do their own letters, that's fine. I don't know how we did the divisive concepts one.
We signed off as the superintendent and the chair, as representatives of all of SAU 50, too.
So then we would have to take a vote, I guess, in concept, if everybody is comfortable with the board signing off on that, and it would be to go to all of our Portsmouth representatives while it's pending in the House, and if it passes the House, it would also be to send a letter immediately to Sununu's office.
Second.
Can we send it to the entire House?
I mean, you can if you want.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think we should.
Doesn't cost anything, and it's already written. I mean.
We have the largest state legislature in the country, don't we?
We do.
So it's a lot of.
It's kind of insane.
I would just ask that the letter be included in our next packet, so the public can be aware of what was sent.
Good idea. That's a great idea. Okay, so Lisa, can you draft the letter?
Yeah, and I mean, I don't want to take up, I did email everybody with the union road. I mean, I don't want to take up too much time tonight over this, but.
No, why don't you draft something, get it to us, and it, it sounds like everyone is pretty much in agreement with this, so.
So we would still need to put it to a vote.
We had a first from Pip. Do we have a second?
She's the first, I was the second.
She's the first, Pip's second.
Oh, okay, that's right. I'm sorry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. So you'll get to us as soon as you can,
and then we'll just authorize you to send it out.
Wouldn't they want to come from the chair, from the superintendent?
Superintendent.
I believe.
Oh, all right, so you can get it out for us, then?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Yes, Liz?
I had a motion that I had asked about last week, but I just wanted to touch on a point, or sort of ask Steve to sort of expand on it. So I don't know if I should make the motion, see if there's a second, and then discuss, or if we could just discuss prior to whether I'd make the motion or not. My question really lies in wanting to eliminate the sentence in the IGD policy surrounding in the presence of, and what that effect, if, you know, if we were to eliminate that today, would that have a positive effect so that going into graduation season and everything else, there's not these discrepancies and issues that can, that could potentially continue to arise throughout graduation season, you know, or would it, or would doing that right now cause more questions than addressing issues? And if that's the case, is there another way that we could motion or do something so that maybe we're not eliminating the policy now, maybe we sort of rework or look at things that are in our. in our retreat and, you know, have something in the handbook and maybe have a handbook that doesn't have this language in it for next year? But, you know, something to the effect of not enforcing this versus removing the policy or something that, I guess I'm just, I'm a little bit concerned that obviously we're, COVID's, you know, unfortunately, it hasn't moved past us, but it's kind of passed and we're having in-person graduation, in-person things, and kids haven't had that for a long time. So I wonder if this is, you know, maybe this set the tone, as the speaker said tonight, that, you know, people saw this happen to other kids and they're not going to do X, Y, Z. But the reality is, is I think kids are hanging out more, we may see more of this. And I guess I just wonder, because, what I want to eliminate is not so much the kids doing, you know, obviously I don't want kids doing these things, but what I want to eliminate is all this sort of discrepancy and back and forth about what this means and, you know, basically, the issues that sort of came up at the last meeting. And so I'm wondering if you could speak to any of that.
Yeah, thanks, Liz. So I, if you're looking for a recommendation for me, I would say, don't just take one piece of that policy in isolation and just remove that particular language. I think we need to look at that policy in its full context and to think through different scenarios that could come from a change. So I would suggest your latter, which is to say, let's do a retreat or whatever it might be.
Yeah, I think we should look at the whole policy as a whole, regardless of whether we eliminate this sentence or not.
Right. But I also want to clarify something, so it's not misunderstood. So even the behavior contemplated in that policy, which again affects their participation in things like spores, has no bearing on being able to go to graduation, for example. So when you say graduate, we're coming up to graduation week activities.
Oh, no, the other.
I don't want to have there be an impression out there that that would have been affected.
That's good to clarify. I guess I was more thinking of, like, people are spending more time together, kids are getting together again. Not that they weren't getting together before, but I think, you know, maybe getting together in larger groups and home, you know, families are having get-togethers and families are having parties with their kids there and all this sort of stuff. So there's a lot more that could happen. And then if we did decide to change the policy for next year, I guess my question, my next question to you is, if we did decide to change the policy for next year, if kids got wrapped up in this language or in this policy and we ended up changing it, they would still, would they still be affected next year come sports season or whatnot? Because essentially, this policy rolls over.
Right. Yeah, so we would, and this could, this would be a discussion of the board, obviously, but in terms of how it takes effect. But in the last iteration of change we did, we applied it to students who were even for an infraction prior, so under the old policy. So for example, the new policy, as we've talked about, had a little more restorative element. You could reduce your suspension if you did this, this, and this. That applied even to students who were caught under the previous policy. So I would assume that would be similar.
Okay, so it's not like set in stone and we could sort of decide if we were going to change, how we deal with prior incidents essentially.
All right, if I could just say something as the chair of the board. We have a process, we have a procedure. We always go through our policy committee, okay? So for Liz, if you don't mind me saying, I think it's inappropriate to make a motion trying to eliminate a policy without it going through our policy committee first. That's the practice that we've always had. Now, it's not carved in stone, we don't have to do it, but that's the procedure and the way that this board operates. So we're doing all this study now about our discipline policies. The next step is to have it go to the policy committee and have the policy committee make a recommendation to the board. The board has the final vote. So to make a motion like that, in my opinion, is inappropriate. It's not the way the process has gone for decades. It's not carved in stone anywhere, so I suppose somebody could make a motion like that if they wanted to. But it certainly isn't, why do we have a policy committee? If we're going to make motions during meetings eliminating policies, why do we have a policy committee? That's part of the structure of the school board. So that's just my two cents worth of that. Lisa, Nick, and Hope.
I'm going to let Nick go first, because he hasn't talked at all tonight.
Sorry.
Don't be sorry.
Yeah, and even setting aside the policy committee aspect of it, I just, I also feel like it sets something of a poor precedent if we make a motion before having completed the process as we perceive it. I mean, we obviously do have at least one more informational meeting on this. And I also think that it doesn't look great for us if we just kind of change the policy as a direct result of a meeting where, although I agree, I think the general agreement was against the policy, I don't think there was by any means a consensus. I don't think there was any real agreement as to what part of the policy exactly a majority of people were against. It seemed like there were a lot of different complaints about it. And so I think getting rid of one piece of it based on what feels to me like questionable evidence feels like it's setting a really bad precedent for potential future policy discussions, as well as also just not necessarily being a well-advised decision on this one.
So Nick, you taped me up really well, because it was kind of a question for Steve. I really agree with Liz that there are many problems with this policy. I mean, I really feel for the kids and the teachers who would maybe have to contend with it if we make an abrupt change a couple weeks before the end of school. So that's a little concerning to me. But I think we should not kick the can down the road and we really should put it on the agenda for the retreat and we should think very seriously about what are any substantial but thoughtful steps that we might take over the summer if we think it's correct and we have buy-in from the administrators to make some changes. My question for you, Steve, though, is, I don't see anything in a lot of these policies that spells out that this is a high school policy or a middle school policy or an elementary school policy. And we haven't heard from elementary yet. But we've clearly heard very different perspectives from high school and middle school in terms of how these policies affect them. So I'm wondering if you can just speak to that a little bit, because if we're talking about changing these, I don't want to change a policy with the high school in mind that makes, you know, life harder for Phil. I don't want to try to impose something that he's doing on the high school if they don't think that makes sense for their situation. But it seems really confusing to me from the outside looking in to go, wait, it's the same policy, why are we hearing very different things about how it's playing out?
Yeah, so just.
Does that make any sense?
It does. So just to be clear, we've been focused primarily on that one policy for extracurriculars. We have other discipline-related policies that we haven't put on the table yet, which would probably speak even more to your point, which is, what's the consistency factor? Whereas this policy is, by its nature, thankfully, primarily a high school policy, which we don't have middle, sixth graders generally.
Hopefully.
Out at the underage drinking parties.
Right.
And the question that Phil and Tim referred to around, well, do we have disciplinary consequences in school for things that kids do out of school, was certainly an important question. But I just want to be clear, for the things they were talking about that they don't discipline in school, generally, the high school doesn't either, right? So we're, again, talking about this policy that's very specific to underage drinking etc.
Fair.
So I don't think, I guess it's a long way of saying, I don't think there's as much inconsistency as you're seeing in that.
Okay.
But it's a fair question. I think putting all of the disciplinary policies on the table together probably would be a helpful component in this conversation, rather than keep coming back to that one very high school-focused policy.
Hope? So I just want to say, I do appreciate Liz bringing it up. And I didn't feel that she's just trying to push through a motion. I did hear you, Liz, say that you're welcome to put a discussion on the table. So I appreciate you putting it out there for discussion. I do understand your concerns around, you know, I feel kind of both sides of the coin, if you will. On one side, we've seen how this directly and negatively can impact our students, so we can't unknow what we know. And so I think we do have to ask ourselves, and Steve, I know I've spoken to you about this after our last high school meeting, you know, is there a way to suspend the enforcement of the language? I don't think you can suspend the enforcement of a language in the presence of, if you, if we don't know, then what are we going to enforce? Are we going to enforce intoxication, you know, and other components very specifically? So if we don't know what we're going to enforce, then I would caution us of suspending anything at this moment. Certainly, I would use the word suspend versus complete elimination of. I also don't know legally if we can just suspend one component of it. That would be a question for Kathleen. But I do have concern around listening to our disciplinary committee. I do not want to see another event come up at the high school. And I think that's what I hear Liz say, there's a road ahead of us where that could happen. And we know the outcome of that. And we've already done a lot of work, I think, in looking at the negative components and the positive components of the outcomes. So I would like to see, from a superintendent's standpoint, coming alongside our disciplinary committee around this policy at the high school till the end of the year, so that they can know they, where the wiggle room is, I guess. And I don't want to see our disciplinary committee faced with another incident where they feel like, this is the policy, my hands are tied, I feel like there's some components here that could be. I would rather see that be a discussion with our superintendent. And then, just in terms of the policy committee, you know, we haven't had workshops like this around disciplining. You know, we've had blue ribbon set aside committees, but not like this with the, so I want to just caution us that we've been doing it this way forever. Just because something's done forever doesn't mean that it has to continue to be done that way. So, you know, and this district is seeing that more and more in new innovative ways. So I just want to keep an open mind as we approach it. But I do agree that it's helpful to go through the whole process and look at it from a broader standpoint of discipline, our approach to discipline. Because in my personal opinion, I have a lot of problems with ICD beyond just the substance components and the responsibility that kids are being held to that may not be drinking. Because I think it's, it goes against our student wellness goal, it goes against our equity goal. I mean, we are targeting a specific number of students because it's with athletes and clubs. And so if you're not in those things, we're basically saying to those students, you're at a different set of standards. And I don't think that's what we want to set. I think we want to look at a policy, it may mean wiping this one in a different way and drafting something new, but we want to look at a policy that says, if you're a Clipper, these are the standards. And it doesn't really matter what you belong to, you know, what you're participating in, these are the standards if you're a Portsmouth Clipper.
I don't think we should get into a discussion about the policy now. I think we've made the decision, we're not going to eliminate that particular phrase right now at this time. We're going to continue with our disciplinary process where we have the meeting in May with the elementary schools. My recommendation's going to be that it go back to the policy committee, but if the board decides they don't want to do it that way, then I guess we don't have to do it that way. That's the way we've always done it. But, and then the policy committee will come back to the board and will deliberate. So that's, I think that, if this pertains to the policy, I'd like to end the discussion.
I just have one follow-up question I think is important for Steve. My question is that as we go into a school year, it starts in August, and we print handbooks that would start for that school year, the reality may be that we're not going to be able to revamp the entire, these entire policies prior to implementing into the handbook. And so my question to you is, maybe you can come back to us with more information about this, but like, by what date is, does the handbook go to printing and by what date would we need to sort of finalize this? So therefore, maybe we could actually get on a timeline, you know, if we're meeting with the elementary schools next, you know, is there an opportunity, like, what is the timeline we're looking at? And like, are we, if we don't have time to revamp everything, then maybe we decided to go for sections and then can, whatever, like, what's the timeline? I guess.
Yeah, so, well, I mean, there's the old timeline and the new timeline. The old timeline is hard prints, when does it go out and we get the prints back. We have always had policies that change somewhere midstream, and so then it's about reeducation. And again, most of our handbooks, now that they're in an online format, it's just a change the link kind of thing. So I don't see a problem with being, with the handbook and being able to make sure the policy is well communicated.
Carrie, can you make a quick, because I'd like to end this discussion?
I see two separate issues with this policy and then the overall. I think we talked about the disciplinary piece before. I don't know that anything is going to change in our opinions about ICD.
IGD.
I, sorry. I would recommend that this be on the agenda for the May 17th policy committee meeting to address.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it already is.
Ideally with recommendations, I think the disciplinary philosophy is a longer process, but I don't see any reason why a discussion with elementary needs to wait for the policy committee to make.
Right. They could come back at our next meeting with a recommendation. The policy committee could, their meeting is the 17th. So yes, it's been on there for some time, I believe.
It just got moved to the 20th now, at 8:00 AM.
Oh, but that's it. That's before our next school board meeting.
No, I can't make that one, that's why I'm hoping.
20th at 8:00 AM is the policy committee meeting.
Maybe not.
It's in, it's in flux.
And it will be.
It'll happen before the next board meeting.
Before our next board meeting.
We should just put that in the agenda regarding.
It'll be updated online.
And when are, when are we having the next presentation?
May 24th.
It's the 24th at elementary school.
Elementary school.
Okay, so then will we be able to have a follow-up conversation as a board? Would that be?
Well, let's see, what, the policy committee might come back with something.
Well, those are two separate, I think, Hope's asking about discipline in general and you're speaking to the IGD in specific, in particular. I think it all depends upon how much progress is made in the policy committee meeting. I don't want to make any promises, because I'm not sure clearness will be reached in one meeting.
Okay, so we'll discuss it at the May 24th board meeting then, about what the next step will be, as far as the discipline policy goes. But maybe the policy committee will have a recommendation by our next meeting.
Right.
Okay. Very good. Kim, would you like to say anything about what's going on at the high school?
Sure.
As the teacher representative?
Well, let's see, a couple things. May 21st is the Seacoast Spring Market, so there'll be lots of artisans vending outside at Portsmouth High School. I think we have over 50 vendors. There are a ton of students, though, so if you want to support our students, we have amazing artists, as you all know, some of whom going to RISD and like really amazing places. So they will be there.
That's the 21st at what time, Kim?
It's 10 to 2.
Okay, thank you.
Juneteenth is going to be on a Monday this year, which is our last day of school for teachers. I just want to put a little blurb out there that it is now a national holiday, as well as a state-recognized holiday. So I did have a couple of teachers ask me if, how that was going to work. So obviously, that wasn't on our school calendar this year, but perhaps we could somehow think about that next year. Last year was on a Saturday, so I think we're out of school by then. I know we were. But anyway, so that's a thing. Secondly, on the, I'm not going to bring the policy back up, but just for a second, in that seniors have a ton of meetings. So in terms of those parties, if we could, you know, just have our admin make it clear to the students that this policy is still in existence, it's not going away, and yes, you might be impacted in your fall sport, and just really hammer that in. It might take, you know, several announcements to really make those students know and responsible for each other. When we talk about, you know, shoulder to shoulder and just being like, not a good idea, let's not do that. You have a contract, you have this with athletics, you have this with NHS. So I think they would do it anyway, but maybe it just needs to be said every, every time they walk around a corner. But yeah, and you're going to speak about the play, right?
Oh, yes. So the school play coming up, it's been announced to be Sondheim on Sondheim. It seems like we've got a lot of very excited people working on it. And yeah.
It's May 21st.
When is that? May 21st?
So it'll be a busy day over there at the high school.
Is it at night?
I believe, yeah, they generally have the show at evening.
Okay.
I guess you wouldn't say reform. Saturday, I guess you wouldn't say, perform.
We got an email about the Portsmouth 400, the education group, that the two high school students are working on.
Yeah.
That's coming along very well.
It's coming along, the interviews are going great. We're still, we're still working with the arborist. He's going to be around, I think. He didn't show up for the last meeting, but yeah. So that's, that's one of the other things, is planting the 400 trees. And...
Trying to find a good site for doing our video production, the oral histories, our tape.
Yeah, I saw that.
Trying to find a stable site instead of going to people's houses, although some of these people have trouble getting around, so we might have to go to some...
What about the library?
Do they have a video, video, that's a good point.
They do, we had great luck with it earlier.
It's in a green screen.
Levinson Room?
You can do it in Levin, no, I get the names confused. Ollie and I.
Okay, thank you.
The Levinsons, downstairs. That's the Lord's room downstairs. It's the Hilton upstairs.
In the McLeod, isn't McLeod upstairs, too?
There are two of them.
But I don't think there's...